The Cortez City Council Work Session/ Special Meeting. Today is Tuesday, November 26, 2024, and the time is 6:30 PM. We'll call this meeting to order and start with A on our agenda, an update from Judge Padilla on the municipal court operations. Welcome to the podium, Judge Padilla.
Good evening. My name is Beth Padilla, and I'm the Municipal Court Judge for the City of Cortez. I'm here to provide updates about what we've been working on and answer any questions that you may have. By way of background, municipal court is held every Monday morning at 9:00 AM. At this point, we are averaging about 21 cases per week. By comparison, when I was appointed by council in 2021, we were handling eight cases per week. So there's a substantial increase in the number of cases that are being filed into the municipal court. Obviously, you are welcome to come to municipal court any Monday morning at 9:00 AM. There is a attorney representing the City of Cortez. That's typically the Assistant City Attorney, Mr. Drew Buffington. We have three court-appointed attorneys, so defense attorneys, that have contracts with the city to provide indigent criminal defense. And typically, we'll have, I'd say, an average of about three in custody defendants every Monday morning. Court lasts for a few hours, Monday mornings, and then if anyone's arrested, we will have bond hearings on Wednesdays at noon, and we also have them now Fridays at 11:00 AM. We've just adjusted that time because City Council, or excuse me, City Hall will be closed beginning at noon on Fridays, and so I felt it wasn't prudent for us to be the only people here during court sessions. So we're going to have that at 11 o'clock on Fridays. We only have those Wednesday and Friday court sessions if we have someone in custody. State law requires us to hold a bond hearing within 48 hours. So anyone that cannot be seen by us within 48 hours is released on a PR bond with a future court date. So, for example, if someone were to be arrested Friday night, we don't hold weekend court, so that person would be released on Sunday. Our counterparts in state court do have judicial officers available on the weekends. They have the Public Defender's Office and district attorneys that cover weekend bond hearings. We don't have capacity for that in the city. So that's the basic structure of sort of how the court works. We have a court administrator and an assistant that are very busy. I recently sent you a letter that hopefully you've been able to review that sort of outlines some of the things that are happening in the municipal court. I'd like to start with some numbers. When I was appointed in 2021, we had 436 cases. It was the height of COVID, right? So there weren't as many people out, and therefore, I think, things just looked a little different back then. So far, we have 992 cases so far this year, and that was as of last week. So we are seeing an increase in traffic offenses. By numbers, we're at 437 this year, last year 411. We're seeing an increase in criminal cases, 372 so far this year, last year 343. Increase in land use cases, we have eight of those, and last year we had three. So that's a substantial increase. Big increase in parking violations, 159 this year, whereas last year we had 51. Animal cases are about on par to be the same. So we have 16 of those so far this year, and there were 19 last year. And remember, the numbers I'm giving you are six weeks before the end of the year, so we're going to have even more. So certainly, cases are increasing across the board. Most of our docket is criminal matters, and so those, the most common offenses that we see are trespass, so individuals that are going to locations they're not supposed to be. We see shoplifting cases. We see possession of alcohol in the park cases. Those are pretty consistent. We see some disorderly conduct, disturbing the peace, resisting arrest. So they're low-level criminal offenses. We're not dealing with homicides. We're dealing with low-level offenses. But many of the defendants we see in our courtroom have some of the highest needs in the criminal justice system from my perspective. So we're seeing very significant substance use disorders, pretty substantial mental health issues for a lot of the defendants in our courtrooms, in our courtroom. If someone is taken into custody by law enforcement, the jail is required to notify us within four hours, regardless of when they're arrested. So if they're arrested 11:00 PM, Ms. Odell gets a text message at 3:00 in the morning, letting her know that someone has been taken into custody. That's state statute. That's not something that we've established. That's the legislature has said that has to happen, and that does happen. So we're receiving notice within four hours. We have to get them in for a bond hearing within 48 hours. I do have a standing order that if I'm not able to see them within 48 hours, we do release them. And we have to release them on a PR bond with no conditions. Again, state law, that's not up to us. So we can't say you can be released, but you can't consume alcohol. You can't do that unless you see the judge. And again, that's beyond our control. Court is typically in-person Monday mornings, absolutely, and then on Wednesdays and Fridays, it might be remote or in-person. We always have WebEx up and available, so anyone can appear remotely at any time. Defendants in these proceedings are not required to remain in the City of Cortez or the State of Colorado during their case. If they live in Utah, they can go back to Utah and just call into court or appear remotely. And so that's a big shift that a lot of municipal courts don't have, and we're really lucky that we do have that, and it's consistently available. That's also a big issue for our defense attorneys, who are often practicing in numerous jurisdictions. So they may be handling a trial in Durango. They can step out and represent individuals in our community remotely on Wednesdays and Fridays. We've talked a little bit about outreach court in the past. At this time, we've had 41 people participate in the program. It is completely voluntary. So if someone is in court because of mental health, substance use, or housing instability, they can agree to address one of those issues, or sometimes all three of those issues, for 90 days. If they do that by working with a local agency that already exists in our community and is already providing those services, we will dismiss their case. This does not apply if there is restitution, right? So if they've stolen something and they have to pay the money back, they're not allowed to be in outreach court. That's not permissible. Out of the 41, I think we've had over 15 attend inpatient rehabilitation for drug use, which is a huge deal. This is a completely unfunded program, so this is essentially the goodwill of community agencies partnering with our court to continue to provide the services they're already doing. Pinion Project is critical. They are our hub, and so they essentially track people down, tell me what's happening, give me updates in outreach court, and let me know if people are being successful. We've had probably five people-ish get housing vouchers, so people that have been unhoused on our streets now have a place to be, in part through the work with Pinion Project and Outreach Court. So we're absolutely moving the needle. We're seeing positive responses from those defendants. When they're in court, they're making eye contact with me. Typically, their hygiene is better. They smile sometimes. When they graduate the program, we typically take a photo. Sometimes that's in the newspaper. So we're getting a lot of really, I think, positive community support through the outreach court program, and I think that's really important, because statewide, some municipal courts are not getting a lot of positive feedback from issues that are happening in their community, and I think we are. So this is a really positive thing that's happening. The outreach court is through the American Bar Association model. That's how we've implemented it, and we've essentially done that with support through a subsection of the ABA in DC. I'm going to pause for a moment and see if any of you have any questions, because I know this is a ton of information. Not yet? Okay. So, let's talk about sort of the opposite of outreach court, jail. We are putting people in jail, and I realize that maybe that's not something I talk about very often when I see you. I talk a lot about outreach court, about this positive, sort of pro-social thing that we're trying to do. There are plenty of people that are in custody because of violations of the ordinances in the City of Cortez. Today, we have eight people in custody. So that's a lot for a municipal court. That's more than normal, for sure. And some of those people have bench warrants. They haven't come to court. Our ordinance say that if you fail to appear in court, a bench warrant shall issue, and it does. And that is a shift that maybe wasn't happening before I was on the bench. A lot of people would FTA or fail to appear two or three times, not receive a bench warrant. I'm issuing bench warrants, because I need people to come to court so we can address their cases. When they get picked up on the bench warrant, then that's where we end up with those Wednesday and Friday court dates. So we are utilizing the jail. The county is working with us on that. And again, some municipalities are having a lot of struggle there. We're not, as far as I know, which is really positive. If I issue a warrant, the jail is willing to accept defendants that have an order for their arrest, whereas some other communities are not having that collaboration between the county and the city, and we are. So that's really positive. I've updated the bond schedule, so if you are arrested for an offense, you can pay a bond. That was updated in July of this year. The maximum bond is $499, and that is for resisting arrest, disturbing the peace, interfering with an officer, and violation of bond conditions, and indecent exposure. So indecent exposure is something that I take very seriously, especially when there are children involved. Frequently, the fact patterns we're seeing are individuals that are highly intoxicated in our parks, urinating, but they're doing it at the playground. They're doing it when there's a field trip. They're doing it when there are children trying to feed the ducks, and I have no tolerance for that. And so you'll see high bonds on indecent exposure cases, just because I think that the damage that can be done is really severe, and the intent is not there. You know, these are not sex offenses, but the damage is, it can be substantial. Trespass is a $300 bond, and shoplifting is a $300 bond. And so those are our higher number bond amounts. For something like possessing alcohol in the park, you're looking at like the $200 range. Most people are not paying the bond. Most people are unable to pay the bond, and so then they have their bond hearing with me within 48 hours. If someone pleads guilty, a typical sentence in our court is three to five days suspended jail. So essentially, someone will come in and say, okay, I'm pleading guilty to trespass. They're sentenced to, let's say, five days in jail suspended on the following conditions: can't get in any more trouble for the next six months in the City of Cortez. Typically, you have to do 10 hours of community service. If there's an allegation of alcohol or drugs involved, you have to go do an evaluation. And then I set a review hearing in 90 days. So they come back to court, and I ask, did you do your evaluation? Did you do your community service? Have you gotten any more trouble? If they've done what they're supposed to, they don't have to come back to court again, and they won't have to go to jail. If they haven't done what they're supposed to, we talk about why. Maybe they've been sick, maybe they were in the hospital. Usually, give them a little more time and say, you know, you need to come back in three or four weeks, and if you haven't done these things, you may go to jail. And typically, that's how people are ending up on jail sentences in municipal court. They're first given an opportunity to comply with other terms, and if they don't do that, then they do end up in jail. Sometimes, we will see individuals that want to resolve many cases, maybe eight or 10 cases with just a jail sentence. You know, they may say, I'm just going to do 10 days in jail. That's the agreement that's been made with the city, and so then that person wouldn't first have the suspended jail. But a majority of our people are getting suspended jail first. Any questions about that? Okay. We want to talk briefly about security in the courtroom. We are incredibly grateful to the City of Cortez for giving us an officer so that people are safe in our courtroom. And so we have an officer there every time we have court. Someone from the city is there, wanding individuals, making sure that we don't have weapons or other issues in the courtroom. Again, we have very high-needs defendants with very low-level offenses, and so it's a delicate balance. We're also looking into some additional, you know, scanners, metal detectors, that, those kinds of things, to just ensure that everyone in the courtroom is safe and not having any issues. I recently attended the Colorado Municipal Judges Association Conference in Glenwood Springs. That was very positive. Learned a lot of things. I have a lot of ideas of different programs I may look into and incentives, especially on our land use cases. We recently met with the Delta Municipal Court Judge and his staff about outreach court. He wants to know how we're doing it, how we are addressing some of the issues that a lot of communities of our size on the Western Slope are also struggling with. I was on the phone this morning with the Municipal Court Judge in Durango, so we're definitely networking. People are asking us for our help and opinions and wanting to learn more about what we're doing in Cortez. So I'm proud of the work that we're doing. I think we are making progress. It is hard, and so sometimes, I know that in the past, some of you've asked questions about recidivism. I don't know how many of our defendants are coming back in. Many of them, many of them are coming back in. But some of them are coming back in sober. Some of them are coming back in housed. And so for me, it's a step in the right direction. I recently had a woman who graduated from outreach court, and she was homeless, she had a serious substance use disorder, she got sober, and she's doing great. But she picked up a new case, and I was really worried about what that was going to look like. She looked great. She's still sober. She was just somewhere she wasn't supposed to be, right? She had a trespass case, she was in a place she wasn't supposed to be. But that is still progress for me. Did she pick up a new case? Yes. Did she understand what was happening? Was she sober and she's healthier? Yes. So for me, that's a success in municipal court. So that is pretty much a very quick version of what we've been doing. We're doing a lot, and you're seeing that in the numbers. And I'm so grateful to Ms. Odell for giving me the numbers, because it feels like we're doing a lot, but when you see the difference from eight cases per week to 21, we are doing a lot. That's a big shift. And so we're typically in session Monday mornings and then Wednesday and Friday for a brief period. And then there is an ordinance, obviously, that will be discussed later. My hope is to spend more time at the city, essentially all day Monday, to be able to meeting, to meet with additional partners, to look into programs, to see what kind of other services may be available for our community.
Thank you so much, Beth. Appreciate all the work that you're doing and the, I mean, the collaboration between all the staff that you work with and looking out for our community, so thank you.
Thanks. Okay.
No questions for me?
All right.
All right, we'll move on to B on our agenda, 2025 Water Rate Recommendations to City Council, presented by Director of Public Works, Brian Peckins.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. Give us a minute to get our slides up. Over the past few years, from 2019 to 2023, the city increased water rates annually by 5%. The revenue generated was enough to maintain and operate the water treatment plant, but not enough to begin replacing our aging water lines. We hired a consultant, SEH, to provide options for generating more revenue to initiate a long-term plan to upgrade our water lines. SEH provided a couple of options for increasing revenue. However, it was determined that their high increase in the base rate was unacceptable, so we modified their rates and increased their tiered rates by a little bit. Tiered water rates are widely used in the arid Southwest to encourage residents to use water more efficiently and more responsibly. We don't have exact numbers, but our water line replacement master plan, which is funded in our 2025 budget, will identify and prioritize water line replacement projects and develop a roadmap and a cost estimate for a long-term, 10-year plan to upgrade our aging infrastructure. Our proposed 2025 water rate recommendations include funding to maintain and operate our water treatment plant, provide needed capital projects at the plant, and provide funding for a few in-house water line replacement projects. I think you've seen this slide many times. I mean, that's, the gist of our problem is 129,000 linear feet of cast iron pipe installed between 1950 and 1975. We also have lots of old four-inch lines in the ground that do not provide adequate fire protection. These are 20 to 19 and 2023 water rates. You can see for the single family, the base rate, it went up 5%. 2020 and 2021 were the same rate because of COVID. We didn't increase the rate that year, but every other year, they went up 5%. Our 2024 rates, as you know, we started out with tiered rates, but when we went back to a base rate of $31.80 and a volume charge, anything over 1,000 gallons was $3.73 per 1,000 gallons. This is kind of a chart showing the revenue generated. You can see all of 2023 and 2024. 2024, we had a bump in May and June when we had our tiered rates, and now it's going back down. These are our revenue versus expenses over the last four or five years. Generally, the revenue is a little bit more than the expenses. You can see in 2023, the big numbers there are because of the loan payoff. Okay, this is the 2025 forecasted water revenue. We did it a couple of different ways. This is based on if we, if our 25, 2025 usage is the same as 2024, our revenue would be Now, we also did it another way. You know, 2024 was, you know, it could have been a unique year, so if you average that consumption from 2017 to 2024, the revenue, projected revenue for 2025 would be just a little bit less. $3.3,783,000 is our projected revenue. Next slide. As you know, we've already approved our budget, our proposed water fund budget for 2025 is Our 2025 expected water fund revenue is a little bit higher than that. That includes the metered water sales, which I just mentioned, which was the $3,783,000. We also have some other revenue sources, bulk sales at the water dock, penalties, water development fees, TOYOC-treated water, and the Cortez Sanitation District pays us a little bit more. So based on our projected revenue from our metered water sales for residential, multifamily, and commercial accounts, we do not need to change our current water rates for 2025. Again, as I mentioned, the projected revenue for metered water sales for 2025, we did it a couple of different ways, based on 2024 usage and then more of an average usage. So along with revenue from other sources, current water rates will provide sufficient revenue for the following: to operate and maintain the water treatment plant, to provide some upgrades to the water treatment plant, and replace some of our aging water lines using our in-house crew. And just as a side note, we just hired our water line replacement foreman. He just accepted our offer today, so we're excited about that. So we recommend that we maintain the current 2024 rates with no increase for 2025. Upon completion of our water line replacement master plan sometime next year, we'll develop a 10-year plan for replacing our highest priority water lines. And then in summary, the current water rates are sufficient to meet the plant's current operating and maintenance needs, some water plan improvements, and some in-house water line replacement. Talked about the water line master plan. We're excited about getting that completed next year. However, delaying infrastructure that completed next year. However, delaying infrastructure upgrades now will increase the cost for future generations and increase the likelihood of catastrophic water line breaks. Long term infrastructure upgrades will require an increase in water rates, whether in the base rate or through tiered rates. Tiered rates can help provide additional revenue for infrastructure upgrades while promoting responsible and efficient water use. Tiered rates may be a future consideration, but tiered rates will not be introduced for 2025. So again, we're recommending that we keep the same rates that we have now, which will provide sufficient revenue for the coming year. That's all I've got, subject to questions.
So how much water line do you anticipate replacing with the in-house crew under this rate?
You know, how much? We've got we've got two projects planned. I can get back to you with the with the, you know, how much water line that would be.
And to that question, Brian, if there are emergency line replacements that need to happen, will those emergency line replacements take away from the money that was allocated for the planned line replacements?
No, it no, it shouldn't. We'll have two separate crews. We'll have our existing, you know, our existing water maintenance crew, which, you know, they they work on the water lines all the time. And, you know, we just had a leak in in front of Wendy's. I don't know if you you noticed that. Fortunately, that was a service line and not the not the main line, which could have caused a lot of a lot of difficulties. But, you know, it's possible. You know, we've got a small team. And if there's a major water leak, we would pull people from our water line replacement team and from our streets team if necessary. But but I think we can manage.
So I guess, sorry, to follow up on that, is there money set aside for emergency line replacements? Like, where where does that come from? Is it just in the budget? Or is that something special that needs to come out of?
No, we don't. We don't have a, you know, emergency water line. We just we just take it out of our existing budget.
I'm not sure, but I think Councilman Keefe Hoffer was wanting to know if we have an emergency. Will that take away from our projects that we intend to do? For instance, if we intend on replacing some water line on Oak Street, and we have a major break, will the money that it takes to fix that major break come from the Oak Street?
I mean, potentially, it could. I mean, depending on how if we had a major water line break on Main Street that, you know, knocked out a lot of businesses, you know, that that could theoretically take away from some of our planned water line replacement.
Thanks. It looks like you've put a lot of work into this, and I appreciate that. That's it's good. I know it's been a rough road all the way around from the beginning of this earlier this year. I have a couple of questions and comments, and I think it's probably more comments than it is question.
Okay.
I mean, we know that we've got infrastructure issues that are huge ahead of us. We know this. It's not in the old saying, it's not that old of a saying, but we've had, we know winter is coming, right? We know we've got a big thing, big bad monster down the road to us. I I feel concerned that we would be happy with just keeping rates where they are and not planning ahead in a more progressive way, in a more forward looking way. We know it's coming. I mean, and we know that the funding in the form of grants and the like are not likely going to get better for us. So if it were my home, I'd say, you know, let's put a little bunny extra aside every month in order to replace the tires on the car or whatever. So the plan that you have right now, I'm sure there are some that would be very happy with saying, let's leave water rates where they are right now. But we've tried, I just I just don't think that's I just don't think that's responsible on a personal level. I think that if we have raised annually by about 5% on our base rates, I don't know why we couldn't consider doing something like that and using that money to stick aside so that when we do have that blowout on Main Street or whatever it is that we have, we have a little bit of reserve. And if we don't have that big blowout, and we're able to ride it out and get through this water line master plan, then we'd have a little bit more reserve in order to put towards that. I think that would be forward looking. So that's what I would have to say, and that would be a discussion for council members, I think. And but there's another thing I'd I'd like to bring up here. And and that is that during this last summer, when we had a great amount of public outcry over what happened, there were a couple of things that I heard across the board. And that was, I mean, I heard it across the board. One of those was not across the board was was how people felt about the tiered water system. And we can talk about that later. But the things that they did talk about, and that I heard a lot, and I think everybody up here heard a lot, too, was that we had single family base rates, the same as non-residential base rates for the smaller meters. And I think there's something that the general public felt is very unfair about that, number one. And both of those were less than the multifamily rates. So base rates. So I I think we need to look at the whole thing a little bit differently. But and that's just an aside. I'm throwing that out there because that's what I heard from the public and everything. Everybody up here heard the same thing. So thank you.
Yeah. And I would say the reason why we didn't recommend raising rates this year is we're doing, we have the water line master plan in our budget for next year. And that'll give us a better idea of of how much we need to to plan. And we thought 2026 would be a better year to increase rates. But, you know, we're we're certainly flexible.
Yeah, I was gonna ask also before Councilmember Randall brought that up about why we aren't just doing the standard 5%, why you aren't recommending that standard 5% increase with this rate. Because I would, I agree, I'd like to see a minimum of us keeping that standard increase rate, because I think we can meet our needs, like you've shown, which is excellent. But at the same time, we also know that we're going to have some explosions.
Yeah, we just, we, you know, we projected our revenue, and we looked at, you know, what we expect for next year. And it is enough to cover, you know, like I said, the operation maintenance of the plant, some repairs needed at the plant, and some of our in-house, you know, water line crew. So I mean, could we use more? I, you know, of course.
Yeah, and I I hate to sound old and old school, but when I was on council previously, we did have a standard, and I believe at the same time, it was 5%. And that was, you know, 12 years ago. And that was something that was standard kind of across the board, was just that. And I think that people kind of came to expect it. But there definitely was an increase. I remember the the conversations of kind of small increases that everyone could stomach over a period of time and not one large increase because we we had to. But I could be wrong in that, Brian. Looks like you're looking at.
Yeah, we we did did put together a chart on the rate increases. And, you know, starting at 2010, it went up 2%, then 0%, 2%, 7%, 5%, 11%, minus 5%, 21%, 10%. And then we got into the 5%. So it's kind of bounced around a little bit over the over the course of time.
It seems like the average is 5%, though. And I, you know, I appreciate you guys maybe trying to be like overly conservative to swing from where we were at the beginning of the year. But I do agree that, like, I don't want to swing too far, that we still, like, we have this big beast ahead of us to pay for. And we might as well save a little more so that we can cover an emergency if necessary, or that we have a little more cushion and wiggle room to do more projects in, you know, at the beginning of that 10 year process. So I would, I would be in favor, too, of seeing a proposed 5% increase to the base and the that per 1,000 gallon. Or I don't know if we typically do that 5% to both of those fees or just the base or but kind of stick with that standard for now until we do get this study, and then we can really dive into the data for, you know, accomplishing that 10 year plan.
Okay.
I I, like anybody else, do not like to see anything go up. However, I I'd rather go up 5% now than 11% next year because we can't make it. So I'm I'm in agreement with council that I think maybe we need to entertain the fact that we have to not stay even, but maybe get just a little bit ahead so that we don't have to hit them all at once.
Brian, do we know how much that 5% would equate to? How much revenue?
We could, we could calculate that pretty, pretty, pretty quickly. I don't know if I can do it in my head right now, but.
Give me a second here and I'll figure it out.
I guess while we're doing some fast math, I do want to say I'm pretty excited to see a master plan come together. And because I think that's really been the thing that's been missing from all of this is having that 10 year plan and knowing the exact costs of everything. So really look forward to seeing that product.
Well, and and we're excited not only for the water line master plan, but we've we've got an ongoing transportation master plan, which is going to give a pavement condition index to all of our plans. So, yeah, we're excited about that because that'll give us a better roadmap for the future.
I feel like, kind of as a model with what we've done with the land use code, that it's really important to keep the public up to date along the way. So it doesn't seem like a big shock, you know, that we're, number one, we're doing this, you know, number two, this is our initial information. This is kind of, you know, roll it out in a way that's small bites that make sense to people.
Do you have that number?
All right, yeah, counsel, based upon the higher number of the usage for the past year, it would be 191,838.45. But it would be actually a little less based upon the several year average. So that would be the high.
I did just want to point out that we are anticipating a 232,000 of additional revenue over expenses based on based on this this revenue that you're proposing. I I do think I would support waiting a year to raise the rates again, because I don't think we should just be collecting money without a specific without a specific plan and a specific purpose. And yes, we know that we do have, we do have water expenses that are coming in the future. But we do already have an additional $230,000 in the budget of or in the revenue, I'm sorry, on the revenue side, that that we could appropriate if needed to for emergencies. And I would much rather, I would much rather us make a rate increase with a long term plan to be able to to bring to our community and say, here's, here's why we're increasing the rates, here's what we're doing, and to be able to build, to build a rate structure that I think will work for our entire community. And I think that's the piece we failed on last time, and I want to make sure that we do that correctly going forward.
I mean, I see where you're coming. And sorry if I interrupted you, Bill. Okay. I see where you're coming from, Robert. But I also, like, we've set a precedent. I mean, the only year that we didn't do a raise, we did a a huge increase the next year to compensate for that. So I think there's already been a precedent set. I mean, and that is a conversation to have, like, are precedents worth continuing to carry out? But we've never really not raised the rate. So I don't.
I think an argument that could go there is, you know, many of our water users view that they've been overcharged this past year with with that tiered rate. And maybe leveling it, like Robert said, is is the answer for this year, until we get our priorities straight, have the master plan in place.
Well, and the other thing I just wanted to add to that is, I think that our rate, any rate increase should be tied to an expense increase. And we are currently more than me in this in this budget of of the revenue and the expenses, we're more than meeting the the projected expenses for 2025. So I that that would be the reason I would have.
It would be helpful for me to know how much money we spent on these emergency water line breaks in the past year or the year before that. So maybe there is some number that we could have in mind. Because I, to me, I don't know how much, like, how much was the most recent one? And if that additional revenue is would cover that?
It's very unpredictable. It's been, you know, some years, it's it's high, some years hardly at all. You know, we could get you some data, but it's not, there's nothing linear about it. It's, you know, it's pretty random.
Mayor and council, if I could also maybe give just a little more context on where we're coming from on not raising the water rates. And I think Councilmember Dobree actually hit on it just perfectly. We felt that, just like it says, you know, people were pretty heavily charged for the tiered rate this year. We felt like that needed to be considered. Secondly, we don't have a number to shoot for. We we don't know what that number is. And it's really hard, we feel, to go to the public, say, well, we need more. And they, you know, and the question would be, well, how much more? I don't know. I just need more. And that's really hard to to tie to something like a rate on the so felt like that was the case. Secondly, as I mentioned, the high number we could expect with a 5% increase is 191,000. And although that's great, and added to the 200,000, we're going to have also a little bit extra of in revenue, understand, we're talking millions here. I mean, you know, it's really, you know, it's mouse milk. It's really not going to move the needle right now. So, you know, we're just trying to be open with the community. We we know it went a little bit bad this last year. We're trying to make the right recommendations that's tied to something. And we don't know what that's tied to. And that's where it's at. But we will certainly take the recommendation of the council, consider that. And if it is the will of the council for us to raise that, we are happy to do that. It's it's a couple of keystrokes. But I just wanted you to understand the thinking behind where we're coming from.
Okay, well, we're going to make a decision on this at the, not tonight, but the next meeting.
I think this is probably one of the best discussions we've had in our work session. I love it. I'm flip flopping on what to do now because Robert had excellent comments. And so I really think we need to discuss this kind of stuff more. I I really do.
I would be curious, because this is my first time on council, but the way I look at this, and I, the way I look at this again, is I we've got a million plus, who knows how many million dollars worth of monster out ahead of us, right? And so we know that's coming. And Roberts, you've got some really awesome points. I'm not sure what the public's stomach is for us getting girding our loins at this point. I don't know what the, particularly in the situation where we where we had the rate increase last summer that was not. And part of what I heard during that was, what are you doing with the money?
Exactly.
And and yet, at the other, and on the other hand, we know if we have one big break or two big breaks, I'm sure we're going to blow through this 190, 230,000 in no time at all. I mean, that's not a lot of manpower nor equipment when it comes down to projects like this. So I just don't know what the public sentiment is, which I think it'd be interesting to have, to ask the public to reach out to us at this point in time and give us their point of view, at least some, if you're paying attention to us. Because this is, this is your money, and this is your city. And we know those water lines are going to need what they're going to need. And this is a drop in the bucket when it comes. And I think we need to show some responsibility ahead of time if we're going to be applying for grants or whatever it is, that we're looking ahead with this. But yeah, Robert, your points are also really well taken, too.
I think we can, without taking a survey of the public, I can pretty well tell you what they're going to say. No more taxes, no more water increases, no more. They, it's up to us to to work the future, to be aware of what's going on in the future. And a lot of our residents are the now. I figured it up. It's about $1.03, $1.30 on the base rate per month for the normal household. So it's not an extreme amount of money. But again, it's $1.30.
All right. Well, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to be on our agenda, General Counsel Discussion. Do we have any topics council would like to bring up? All right, seeing none, we'll end this work session, and we'll start our regular meeting at 7:30. at 7:30.
Amen.[1739.22]